We'll call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM and begin, as always, with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, our which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, public, for having come. We'll open public comment at 6:04. Anyone would like to share anything? Public comment will remain open for at least 30 minutes. So if you, the spirit moves you between now and 6:34, please step up to the mic. Get my clock going, alright? Seeing no public comment, approval of minutes. People had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting, which was not that long ago. Does it? I feel like this came up pretty quickly from our last meeting.
I didn't have any changes.
Looked good to me.
What you got, Brian?
The super minor thing where Al Nova is presented as two words at one point, when it's actually all one word. Beyond that, it's great. So it's the top of page five of the book. This Fitzgerald asked about Al Nova.
Maybe it was Al.
It could be. You know this person. I'm not aware of who he is.
Mr. Nova.
If no one has anything else, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I think that motion carries. No, I think that that was for the public and non-public unless anyone had a difference depending on the non-public minutes. So a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes.
Yes, I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Alright, good, thank you. Alright. Central office report and budget.
Okay, great. We did put an updated copy of the budget in your board pack. I don't know if Ron or Dr. Bennett, you had anything you wanted to talk about for that?
Yeah, and I know a month ago we met and there was a focus on three options, but mostly a focus on two options for the draft budget for the board to consider. A big difference being the unfilled position and keeping that in the budget or not keeping that in the budget. It is Ron and my recommendation to remove that unfilled position and lower the budget to what is in your board packet, which is major changes, which is a 3.35% increase. We had a lot of conversations and Principal Q has a really solid plan for how he can ensure that the high quality instruction does not get impacted. I also, I think there was a request at the last board member, I don't know if it was from Allison, was sort of the impact on class size, or maybe it was Dan. The impact of class size and academic achievement. I did a very quick review of some scholarly articles and I put that in your folder. In order for you to have a standard deviation up or down around academic achievement based on class size, a standard deviation of one, you would have to look at class sizes going from high twenties to teens. But we're going from teens to teens, so there's really no impact in the research on the academic achievement by going down to two teachers in second grade. Also, wanted to remind the board, we're really confident in this recommendation because of the preventative science that Brentwood is really strong with. We screen kids early, we provide interventions early. We also have a really strong system around our PLCs. So our teachers are working collaboratively together weekly, they're looking at data, and they have a strong focus on tier-one instruction. So there's a lot of systems in place that are gonna support the students and we just feel really confident. And given, given the landscape of public education and the funding needs, we just feel like it's, we wouldn't be doing our due diligence if we weren't recommending to you to remove the unfilled position and go with the 3.35. But we're, it's, it is the board's final decision. You have option B in your board packet from last year and then last month, and then you have the new option in your board packet for this month. And Ron and I welcome any questions or thoughts that you have.
And I believe that was the only change.
Yep, that was the only change.
Thank you for looking this stuff up. This is great.
I'm just looking at this table now and I'm just thinking about what the budget committee requested as far as data, if we could pull it together. And I think this is spot-on as far as like the enrollment trends and class size trends. They also asked for like the correlation to academic achievement.
Yep.
Is that something we should just go to like the New Hampshire state website and the DOE and grab state test results and pair it up with this side by side?
Yeah, I am working on getting all of that data that you, that they requested in a viewer-friendly format. Have to go through the DOE, what do they call them, Molly? You've sent them to me, like DOE fives or whatever, and look expenditures versus appropriations and make a graph. Also wanna parse out, when we're comparing data for 10 years, we're not gonna be comparing apples to apples because five years ago, the state testing changed. So we wanna make sure we look at the five years and then the five years so that we compare apples to apples. And we're not comparing different testing tools, norms, or proficiency rates. So we, 10 years is really hard to do. Five years is great. Doing that, I know we're also, they're also looking at the last 10 years of the average teacher salary, which we have to put on the ballot anyways. There, there's a graph for that. So I am working to get you all of that information in a viewer-friendly format and I will send it to the board and then you can, you can send them all that information. Cause we're just, it's just parsing it out and putting it in.
Thank you for doing all that.
Friendly formats, yeah.
Not a light lift at all, it seems, so thank you.
Just, just, just some graph making. That just requires highlighting lines and dense documents and transferring it, but we're working on that. I also know that they, the student-to-teacher ratio is not as transparent if one was to go to the DOE website, cause they list student-to-teacher ratio, they list all the adults in the building. They're not look, they're not listing the ratio of classrooms. So if you look and says, well, they have, you know, it's one to eight, that's actually not the lived reality of the public school system and certainly not the lived reality of the Brentwood School District. Because the nurse is counted as an adult, but she's not a classroom teacher. Paras, special educators, your OT, your PT, your school counselor, they're, your paraprofessionals, they're listed as adults in your school, so their ratio looks really small. But as you all know, as parents who have had kids through the system, that's not the class ratio. That's not, that's not the reality. And these people have very, very different important roles that are all legally mandated by the 306. So I also wanted to make sure I included something, Dan, in the, in the information explaining the student-teacher ratio that you would get off the DOE versus the lived real experience in Brentwood. So that's what's taking a little bit longer to make sure that everything is packaged in a way that the voters can understand.
Yeah, we've, just a couple of notes to add about the graph. If you go to the very top, which is the 13, 14 school year, we had, we had two classrooms that had four teachers. So our school has been accustomed to having to shift where staff have to be based on, on numbers. It's never a goal to have class sizes of 12 or 13. We love class sizes to be somewhere between 16 and 19. That's the magic number. So I think the budget we're presenting is fiscally, fiscally responsible. It's also something I can advocate for, this budget, that we can, we can not add that teacher to the budget and still have the same quality education that we've come to expect here.
Can I just ask kind of a dumb question, maybe? In our board packet, there's a major changes page. That's referring to the budget.
Yes, I don't have the copy of the next. It should've been all together.
Yeah, it's all together. It's page 21 of your board packet.
Yeah.
And you'll see proposed fiscal year 27. And that, that is what we're referring to.
So the major changes should be about $249,000?
Yep, and that's 20, page 23 of your board packet.
So that, yeah, that should be inclusive of the whole packet, hopefully.
My question on that was on First Student. It's an increase of 13,000. Do we have a locked-in rate for next year or is that a best guess?
We do. So at the end, was it in the springtime, I think it was, Dr. Andruski worked with First Student. We had what was called a three-plus-two contract, so locked in for three years plus two additional years, and both parties had to mutually agree. And Dr. Andruski worked with First Student last spring to work on a new rate. And also, it's a combination of a new, the rate going up, but then also, in a lot of the districts, we were having the, we'd based the calculation many years ago on the number of school days and we have a little bit less now, so we had, we were able to drop the days a little bit.
Cause so that is like, my question on that, is that enough? Like if?
Yes, that's what we know.
Yeah, so what we do is we take the number of school days and the daily rate that we pay and that, we budget for all of them.
And so he, we're not in a plus year, like we're in an.
No, he, yeah, he, he, we're locked in. I'd have to double-check for how many years. But this year we're in right now, we, is the first year. So if you remember when we did the budgeting last year, we talked about a First Student increase and we added a projected increased rate for the current year cause it wasn't, the negotiations weren't final at the time when we did the budget last year. But the year we're in right now is year one of the contract. And I don't know if they did a three-plus-two again, or if it's a full five-year contract or just a three-year contract. But it's, this is. We're in a contract, a signed contract, and this year that we're currently in right now is year one.
Molly, I have a question.
Sure.
Under the salary, under major changes, it's a reduction of 12, six.
So that is every salary line in your budget together. So all of this, so when you look at your, your long code, it probably starts with a 10, I think, 10 or 11, and it's a two-digit, two-digit number, then a four-digit number, and then a five-digit number. That five-digit number, if it starts with 5, 0, 1, that indicates salary. So 5, 0 indicates expense, 5, 0, 1 is salary, and then 5, 0, 2, 3, 4, 5, that's everything other than salary. So what I did is every single, what we call 5, 0, 1 account, so anybody that's here that's made, you're in a 5, 0, 1 account, we took everybody in the budget together. So it's negative though because removing the, the unfilled position.
Unfilled position.
Well, so.
In the raises.
Correct.
The pair of salaries are changing.
Correct.
Right.
So anybody that's in a negotiation year would come across at the current year rates, flat-funded. Anybody that's in an active CBA would step and trap per the, per the CBA. Anybody not in there was put at a 3% increase unless otherwise requested for an adjustment, but I don't believe anyone was here. And then we did remove that unfilled teacher position, so that's why it goes into the pegged out.
I mean, the major thing is health and like, I mean, it's all over the news. I mean, I think it's probably worth just putting a slide up in March to explain the fact that this is all of America and that they shouldn't vote about that at our meeting, but elsewhere.
The health and dental increase is greater than the overall change.
Yes.
So I just, I feel like Dr. Bennett and Principal Q were expecting to get a long conversation about the teacher position and they haven't had any questions about it.
Well, no, I think you presented.
But I'm not in mud. I think that's a testament to the preparation work that you did. I really appreciate the, the background. I feel like the, the impact of class size and even the work to get all the building permits to show how many of these are two-family homes in three ponds, or two-bedroom homes in three ponds, not two families. So I feel like it's a data-based decision, which we always strive for, and I'm really happy that you are comfortable with the recommendation, so.
One of the numbers that would've changed on the enrollment graph is, all the way to the right, the average class size. If we had kept that position in there, we would've dropped to an average class size of 14. And keeping the position in there, it's back up to 16, which has been almost the average for the last seven or eight years, so.
Yeah, I really appreciate the research deep dive. You did a much deeper dive than I've ever done on this topic and it makes me feel comfortable with the decision that we're, it sounds like we're about to make, but also just like for future consideration, like it, magnitude matters, right? So like if you're moving from 22-plus down to 13 to 17 range, that's when the most significant increase in academic outcomes occurs, and it's most concentrated in K through three. So we're moving up to 19, right? We're not moving up quite to 22, but we're close. And this is in K through three, so it's, it's nearing, you know, the edge of what I would feel comfortable with based on the meta-analysis that you shared, so. But I appreciate like the conviction and all the, the work that went into this. I feel, I feel comfortable with it.
Okay, great. Any other?
One other budget question?
Sure.
I was, I saw this on the co-op, or I couldn't find it here. We're required under new law to have a, a line for out-of-district placement.
Not out-of-district, open enrollment.
Open enrollment, yeah, sorry.
So we put that in every budget. I can double-check here.
I couldn't find it tonight, but.
So it's on page one. Well, page one of the line-by-line, not page one of the PDF. And it's like almost halfway down, open enrollment tuition. It's the 11 dot 1100 505 60? Sorry, am I, I need new classes.
Page 24 of the packet, and it's under salaries of, it's under the salaries of substitutes.
Under the 5, 0, 1.
Salaries of substitutes.
It's right under that.
The line below it.
Okay.
And so in all districts, we did put a dollar. I don't know if you want to explain.
Yeah, we have talked about that. We talked about it last time. We put a dollar in. That is what we're recommending. You can absolutely change that if you want, but that is what we are asking, recommending of all SAU 16 school boards to put a dollar in.
I'm comfortable with the recommendation of a dollar because there's no way to know.
Yeah, and we do not have information that any of the schools within driving distance will, will make a motion to be receiving schools next year or this year in January. So it could happen in the future, but not within this budget period. So that's why we felt comfortable doing a dollar after conversations we've had with surrounding districts.
Swayze kids aren't gonna drop.
And no one's gonna leave here.
Yeah.
No one's gonna leave here anyways.
And that's, that, is that a vote that this board would take whether we want?
To be a receiving?
To be a receiving.
You would have to create a, it would be a whole policy.
Wouldn't that have to be a school district meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not just us as a board. We'd have to.
The town.
For the town.
You would decide to put it to voters. It's just, I believe, my understanding, it would be something you would put to voters. But it's just not a recommendation we're making. It's, there's so many unknowns.
Yeah. So the Supreme Court ruling was only about that we have to pay. It was the other end, not being receiving. But that if somebody chose to leave, we had to pay.
Yeah, it said you have no choice but to be ascending.
Okay.
Okay.
Other things about the budget?
Nope, 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 really. The only change was the removal of that unfilled position. And if this is what we want to bring to the budget committee when we meet, I don't remember what date that is.
We don't have a date yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I was gonna, January 12th is a date that worked well for the budget committee, but by that point, the budget committee is meeting just about weekly. And so if that date doesn't work, we could pick another one. I just was toying with the idea of seeing if we wanted to try to squeeze it into December before the holiday break. And just based on the progress of the budget committee, who's been chipping away at some of the smaller budgets thus far, it seemed to make sense to like wait until January. And that was one of the first, if not the first, in January, on a Monday night when we're not also meeting here. If we wanted to try to put both on one night, I suppose we could, but. So Monday, January 12th is what I had written down. I'm just gonna double-check to make sure. Yeah, and then we would not only be at the top of the agenda, but I think we'd be like the only budget reviewed that evening. So it would be 6 o'clock at the town office on January 12th, if that works for everyone. Or if not, we can pick a different date.
That works for me. The only, I think, thing, Dan, and I think that you are well-equipped to answer the questions, but when you sent me that email, like it, like put up red flags about our past with the budget committee. And I think that like, from my perspective, like, I think right now we're making the responsible decision. I think that we have always made responsible decisions, right? But like, I don't, I, our town has had the history of looking at things differently than we do as a school board.
Yeah.
And I just like, I don't want them to like dive deep into state testing data as a, as a, as a measure of like what, everything that happens in Swayze. And I think our state testing data stands on its own. I'm not worried about that.
I, I will say that when it comes to the process, like what we've been doing with every other budget review so far, like we've, there's been like massive data requests and reviewing everything with a fine-tooth comb. But then when it comes time to vote, the budget committee thus far has simply just approved whatever the select board has approved. So, well, is there an exception to that?
It's got a little complicated with the increases for the raises this year.
There was a back and forth around. And Brentwood town employees, the select board had stated that there was a cap of a 2.8% increase in, in salary. But when it came to an individual, I forget which department we were reviewing at the time, the department had asked for 3%, which more accurately reflected like the northeast cost of living increase. And so the budget committee made that recommendation. And so there was a little back and forth and revision that happened with the select board, but we ended up coming back around to the 2.8% that the select board had stated initially. And it looks like every other department's gonna align with that. So that's like the only, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, but that's the only like hiccup or variance from what the select board has requested and how the budget committee has actually voted thus far.
I, I don't wanna like move out of the nitty-gritty that you're talking about right now and into the, I do wanna move out of the nitty-gritty and into the big picture of like what we're doing, which is I feel like we have a very solid budget that we're gonna bring forth with good data behind it. So I'm not, I don't, you know, I'm not worried about, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Like, I think that's a good point for them. Like, here, we'll present this data from the state and it, look how wonderful it is, but this is only like a fraction of the wonderfulness that Swayze is presenting and we're, and, and we've really thought through this budget and we can defend it.
Great, right.
Yeah, and I think it reflects like responsible decision-making. And any other little things where cuts could be made, like Ron and Dr. Bennett already did that.
He did a fine-tooth comb.
Is the facilities and maintenance increase a project, like a specific project? It's 21,000.
It's, I think it's a few, it's a few things and.
And it's all in the capital, like there are items that are on the capital improvement plan?
Yes.
And they're but like budgeted for next year?
Yes.
Okay. I also put in your board pack a current year financial. There really were not that many change, oh, sorry.
Do we need to vote on this before we, that we wanna take this to the select board?
It wouldn't hurt.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt the 26, 27 budget as presented.
For presentation to the?
For presentation to the budget committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
No, no, no worries. So in your board pack was also a current year financial. We didn't have that many changes since the last time we met. There was actually really two major changes. A change in special ed contracted service, which is a change in student need, as well as some computers that were purchased. But still, we don't have any unanticipated revenue at this point in time. Did anyone have any questions? And again, we, when we decide what will be funded with the trust funds, then the, the right side would be populated. And I did put the trust fund balances here so that you'd have it for your consideration. Did anyone have any questions? And thank you for sending the manifest. I already have those back.
With the contracted special ed services, is that something that we would look to bring in-house in the future? Or is that like we're set with the contracted?
Well, I, I think we always start with trying to hire an employee. It's getting harder and harder to find people who aren't going to the private sector and wanna be part of the school system, especially when their specialization. Currently, it's our BCBA and our part-time speech person are both contracted services. So for years, it's, the, the speech has always been in-house. And that was a goal, but the certs did not find.
Yeah, you advertised and you did not get.
Merrimack's actually starting this in January, a speech and language pathology master's program because there's such a shortage.
Can we help with the curriculum and promote public school? Don't go to private practice, work with kids.
You should.
Be part of a community.
Well, you could connect them to internships perhaps.
Yes, yes, please.
We've been, that being said, we're really pleased with the, the service that's getting provided. And they are a part of our school, even though they're not SAU employees, they're definitely part of our community.
Just like budget-wise.
Right, for sure.
We're paying. So like that's something for next year that we would look to hire. Like, will that position be open again or like we're just paying?
There's a couple, yeah, it doesn't, the, the special ed contract service line, it doesn't speak to just one position. It speaks to a sprinkling of IEP services, so.
So we not have a full, a role.
Yeah, it's, it's, right, it would, it would, it's a part-time here, a contracted service. I don't know if we would get to the point where we would be able to hire an in-house like BCBA. Stuff like that, they're just really rare. And unless you're full-time and you're gonna pay them at the very, very top, they make a lot more money doing contract services. It's really, it's just a big wave and it's the same you're gonna see in all of our budgets, is that contract line services where professionals.
I was thinking that would, that's also a savings if they're not a full-time employee, you're not paying for health insurance. One is 50% and our BCBA is 40%. It's two days.
So that's all I had, unless anyone had any questions. Thank you.
Do we need you for anything else?
I don't know, do you? No, but you're always welcome to stay.
I have a lot of prep to do before.
I know you don't, I know you don't.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
I know you'll be disappointed to leave.
I know, I'm gonna be disappointed if there's no snow day.
In your folders, Brian, if I can go down to the next.
Yep.
Agenda item is a principal job description and there is a draft timeline. So what I would love from the board. And there is a draft timeline. Um, so what I would love from the board, I just have a few questions for the board after you get a chance to review that and, and send me feedback, or is there something on that job description that isn't there that you want to be there? And then the principal jobscore, job search timeline is there. It is a draft. And it's not public yet because I'm meeting with the faculty next week at a staff meeting to go over it with the staff, and I want them to see the timeline first, so that's why I'm not, like, saying specific weeks and dates, but that is the draft timeline that Heather, um, wrote up. And so I have a question, if the board wants us to survey the community, to see questions, and then a board member for first round.
When you say survey the community, that's more people than the survey to the staff and the families, it's just generally to the Brentwood community?
Just, just send it out. And, and some communities do, and some just say staff and parents are what we're looking for. I just wanted to ask you all.
I mean, when we did the superintendent search a bunch of years ago, we surveyed everybody, and I think that that was really important because there was animosity and we needed to, like, get everybody on board. I don't think that that, I, I personally don't think that that's necessary. I don't think there's animosity towards what's happening here at Swayze.
Yeah.
My two cents.
I just don't know if we have time to get valuable feedback between now and when you would wanna start. Like, to give people enough time to see the survey, forget about it, get reminded about, oh, yeah, you gotta do that.
Yeah, with staff and families, like, you have, like, email addresses for all these people, right?
We'd just be posting a QR code around.
Yeah.
The town, and anyone could.
But I also don't see how it would hurt to do that. Like, to put something out.
Yeah.
And if people don't respond, then...
I lean a little bit towards casting the wider net.
Yeah.
Just because there are members of the community who may not have Swayze students, but who will have Swayze students when their children become of age, and who will have an interest in this.
We do not have time to do, like, a newsletter article.
Is that something, like, we have the town's Facebook page that could potentially go on that? I wonder, it's not like a solicit, but just a posting of, like, here's something, you can look at it. I don't know.
Post it on social media, right? There's no reason.
I mean, the feedback is, we've only used electronic, but people complain that you didn't outreach to everybody, so I feel like you either figure out how to outreach to everybody, or...
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what percentage of...
I mean, we could go the library, I'm sure would put something up. There's a
Library Town Hall.
Yoga senior group that meets.
Fire station, does anyone go to the fire station?
I know the staff would probably be very interested in providing some feedback as far as
Yeah.
traits and, um, questions, suggestions.
And is this a job description that we, the, like, SAU 16 has used, or is this created?
It, it's from, it's a template. And then I worked with Katie and Ron to make it specific to Brentwood.
Got it. And it, like, incorporates the new strategic plan values and all of that?
Yep, and the faculty's gonna get a chance to look at it, um, next week. So it might, it might change a little bit. If something comes up during those faculty discussion, everyone feels it's really important, then I would add that.
Is there, um, like, what's the, is there ever minimum requirements that state? Like, especially with Swayze being, like, a high-performing school, and this probably being a highly sought-after position, just to, like, get the best candidates right up front? Would it make sense to consider a bullet point under minimum requirements for, like, X number of years served as a principal already?
It's, it's up to you all. Sometimes we come up, we wait and see what our candidate pool is, and then we will say, we have 12 candidates with five or more years as principals. We wanna focus on just interviewing them. Sometimes we don't put in the posting just to see what we get. Um, there's also, um, I know we talked a little bit about whether or not there would be internal candidates applying. So I, I don't know if we just didn't wanna rule them out. But it's...
Yeah, I guess it, I, like, if you had an AP who was super motivated and, like, wanted to grow with the school, I wouldn't wanna rule them out necessarily. But like, X number of years with experience as an administrator, maybe, yeah.
We could do, like, a minimum of certain, we could do a minimum of blank years as an administrator. Cause that, I mean, I think you guys are looking for someone who's definitely been an administrator before.
Yeah.
Their administrative role could have been in other areas. But if you want me to add that, I'm happy.
I don't mind that. I certainly don't want principal experience, because, I mean, that would've prevented us from hiring Dr. Andruski as superintendent, right?
Yeah.
And I think we got the best of the best, so I don't think that...
I think that already has, you know, a minimum of five years of teaching experience, successful administrative experience, the elementary level, elementary school level preferred. I kind of prefer leaving some flexibility, I think, as Dr. Bennett mentioned. Then they can do the culling, you know, based on what they receive, with a focus on the strongest candidates. And I think, as you point out, this is an awesome school, so who's not gonna wanna come here? Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Just 'cause I didn't realize this, so the, the principal also works on the school year schedule, not like, it, cause the rest, the, the SAU administration works full year, right?
The principal works year-round. Does it say not?
It says the work year is 260 days.
Yeah, it, that's, that's what all our administrators got. That's year-round with four weeks of vacation plus your 11 holidays or 12 holidays. So that's still a year-round contract for an administrator.
Does it feel like you work more days than that?
That is such a weird way to put it. I've never seen any, like, don't worry, you only work 260 days. You don't have to work weekends.
Sometimes I don't work on Sunday.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
The only thing that I feel is not captured, and maybe it's just in the selection of the person that it happens, but like, the only thing about culture here is, like, an environment that's safe and conducive to individual instruction, which is certainly important, but I think like, a culture, like, I think Swayze is so special because kids have fun and wanna come here every day, and that's, I don't feel like that's captured.
But does that have to be captured here?
I do think it's an essential function. Right? Like, I don't want somebody who's, like, super smart in competency-based learning, but really doesn't build any culture.
If, um, if you relook at the essential core values, the first one, and the student center believes all students can learn when given the proper support, and when they feel a strong sense of belonging to their school community, I think we were trying to capture the sense of community and belonging being the first, most important value.
Who sees this?
Everyone.
Public.
Right, so this is, like, the job posting?
This is the poster.
Yep.
I mean, I, I agree completely, Allison, I just think that we, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of it is written for the job posting, and some of it is gonna be interview process.
But I made a note of it because we can make sure we have a question that addresses that. And sort of something around how do you facilitate or cultivate a sense of belonging, or what do you look for? If we went to your school, what would we see that would promote students' sense of belonging and inclusion, or something like that? We can wordsmith a question or two that, make sure that addresses that.
And the only other, like, I'm looking at, like, logistical things, but is there anything about, like, working with the teacher and area contracts and, like, you, you know, that's a hard word, but like, kind of like, working with those groups?
There is a bullet in there.
The leaves and the empowerment of all educators?
I think we put something in.
There's a bullet that says, coordinates with central office and recruitment, selection of employees, maintenance of personnel files, administration of collective bargaining agreements, corrective action, and other human resource issues.
These first round, I was reading up on the interview committee in the process. Like, once the SAU senior leadership goes through resumes and recommends a small batch to the interview committee, it says that they'll all happen on Thursday, Jan- the interviews themselves will all happen on Thursday, January 29th?
That's a, a draft, yes.
And so is it, like, are they in person and
Yes.
just like rapid-fire?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's, it's an hour each, and it's back-to-back, break for lunch.
And approximately, or like, a range, like, how many, uh, candidates would make it to that first round phase typically?
Depending on the final decision of the first round. So the first round will get together, and I will bring a, a set of resumes. I won't bring all of them, so if we get 30 or 300, I'm not, I'm gonna, we're gonna narrow them down. And then I can say, we could do eight, or we could do 12, here's 15 resumes, how do you guys feel? Do you wanna schedule a second day? Or you say, no, I, I, we feel really confident if we, we have these first eight, let's do one day. And if we really don't come up with any final candidates, four or five candidates after that, we'll go back to the second round. So sometimes it really depends on how many applicants we get. We get a lot more for elementary schools than we do for upper, upper grades, so I, I would anticipate around 30.
Do, um, the elementary schools ever put a student on there?
I've seen a student on middle and high, I've never seen a student on elementary. The students are involved when the third step process is when the final two candidates, we get to do, do a site visit here for half a day, and that's when students sit and meet with them and interact with them.
Cause Anna was only in sixth grade when she sat on the middle school principal search.
It's a long day, it's a long day for, I mean, we start at seven, a little after seven, and we end a little after four. There's a lot of adult conversations that first round.
Yeah.
And we have a rubric and...
Oh, just, um, on the timeline, the, you're gonna bring forth a recommendation, or the superintendent's recommendation, uh, to us on March 2nd, but that's actually our town meeting date? I just looked at the calendar, so we, we just have to adjust that one. Or we might have to rethink the timeline altogether, if...
We will bring you the superintendent's recommendation in March.
Okay.
So whatever day, or we have a meeting.
We don't have a meeting, so actually, that day's probably a good day, because we could maybe have a meeting before that, cause otherwise, we don't meet in March usually.
Would that be okay if we did that? Cause I don't know how we would get it to you sooner, and I'm nervous about waiting till April if we have a top candidate that another district's gonna take.
Would it have to be like a meeting that's recorded here, and then we bounce over to the, okay?
Yep.
Or we walk over to the job?
It'd just be posted for...
Yeah, yep. It could just be one meeting.
I'd be up for, uh, unless others are interested, I'd be up for interviewing the first round people. And just, like, helping with the process in general.
Great. It's up to the board. They'll take whoever.
So, do you need a formal blessing of this?
Yeah, I think that you just need a motion and vote on who you're gonna send to the interview committee.
I'll make a motion to, for Dan to be the board member.
I'll second the motion for Dan to be the board rep on the hiring committee. Thanks. All in favor? Aye. Sweeping mandate, Dan. All right.
Great.
And then, what was the decision on the, on the community survey? Did we make one? That's the other case. Do we have a, a motion on, do you need a motion on the description and timeline as well?
No, because I want to meet with the faculty
Okay.
and, and final, like, double-check with all of them, Karen.
Who's gonna create the survey?
Um, Heather Murray, the director of HR, and then I will create a QR code. That's where my talents come in. Her talents are creating the survey. And so we'll just put the QR code all over the place, Ron will send it out. So, I mean, you, if Ron sends it out and we post it a lot, I mean, you might get community anyways. It's really...
I mean, we got limited community in, in all of the surveys we've done, even when we've, like, posted in many, many places, so I think just getting it out there so it's available if people are interested in it.
Mm-hmm.
I'd agree with that. Yeah, it doesn't hurt.
Okay.
Uh, take a moment to ask about public comment. Anyone have any comment?
Statement, maybe? Um, when you were talking about your insurance, um, changes, y'all are locked in based on a contract. So the town just cut their rates by making shifts to the balance between employees and employer, but that is not something that you have the benefit of being able to do, so.
This is true.
CBA.
It is in the, in contract negotiations, but it's not something I'm...
Yes.
I would not, I would not want to do that.
Um, just one more point about making sure that we have that meeting on March 2nd, is that, in theory, that is Brian and I's last meeting, and it would probably be better to get that decision in before you have two new board members.
Yep.
Unless you decide to stick around. There are no other comments, we'll close public comment at 6:50? All right. Principal report.
Yeah, thank you. All, all this conversation brings back memories of the first time I walked into this building. And it was, um, I was one of two finalists. I met with Superintendent Michael Morgan and the current principal, and I had a tour of the school for the first time, and it was before dismissal, so I got to see students, and I was just awestruck at how happy Swayze kids were. And I'm really happy to say, after, this is my 14th year, that kids are still coming to school really excited, and really sad when they can't come to school because of holidays or whatever it is, so, um, but it's, it's all sweeping back in meeting the staff back then in, um, a lot of years, but, um, thank you, anyway. It's a weird process to, starting from all the work, by the way.
You're gonna have them, like, bake cookies the day they build a building?
Yeah. So it smells good, like, when you're building a house? Yeah.
One of the things I just wanted to highlight, and you have it in your pack, and we've already kind of used it for one of the main purposes, is just this uh, history of enrollment and class size, and I just, uh, I'm, I'm glad we could put it to use and that we can keep holding on to it about how, how enrollment has, has declined a bit, but we're kind, we're, we're being responsible with the decisions we're making. And we have amazing teachers, uh, at our elementary school, and I know we're going to, um, make some good decisions, have a good plan in place, um, for any shifts that we have to do. Two other things I wanna highlight before we just move the meeting along, um, was our Friends and Family, formerly known as Grand Friends Day, happened the Tuesday morning before Thanksgiving break. Huge numbers, over 400, um, visitors, um, and it was, it was fantastic. Big thanks to our staff, to our students, excuse me, and, um, to our PFT for volunteering and being a part of that, but, uh, tons of visitors that day. I also want to applaud the efforts of Swayze School students, families, Katie Gallo, Rebecca Doucette, all the people that organized our food drive for end 68 hours of hunger. Just some quick numbers. Again, we did pair up grade levels to see who could bring in the most, and that's going to be announced, uh, tomorrow morning. But one thing Mrs. Gallo did share with me was, um, over, uh, it was $1,470 worth of monetary or gift card donations were collected, and almost 5,000 items of food. And it was desperately needed at, um, where they have, where they store all the food, and, um, so... And, um, so, big shout out to everybody involved with that. So it really says a lot about the, the giving at this time for our families. Short report from me, but, um, that's where we're at. November was very short. We're looking forward to, uh, a strong finish to twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you. Cool. That's good news about the, all the food that was collected. It's great.
We didn't know where to put it.
All right. Um, report from the chair. So Safety and Security Task Force update.
We had no meeting.
Excellent.
Right.
Superintendent.
Correct.
Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
No meeting.
All right. I'm gonna put mine to the last because there was a meeting. Community Engagement, or, uh, sorry, Strategic Planning Committee. All right. Dan, I feel like we've done a lot of your stuff already, both Budget Committee and Board Member Correspondence. Do you have anything to add on either of those fronts?
And my biggest thing was just that, like, trying to either lock in a date for us to go to Budget Committee or get it in front of everyone so that we can either choose that one or pick a different one in January.
Okay. So I think we're all on board on January twelfth. I got that impression.
Cool.
So I have a work meeting at five before that, but it's, it's, um, via Zoom or whatever the equivalent technology would be. And so I can be there.
Nice. I'll bring that back.
Community Newsletter.
Oh, gee. Okay, good.
So Community Engagement, uh, does anyone else had any correspondence aside from Dan's question on the enrollment history?
Nope. All right.
What are we gonna write about for the January newsletter? Is there anything?
Alison and Brian's tenure on the school board. All the things that have been accomplished.
I was gonna say Ron's retirement, but, um.
With a, oh no, it'd be too late to put the QR code for this community.
Cause it'll come out in January.
We could do it then or we could do Ron's retirement, like, in March when we have the new principal, like introducing the new principal at the same time.
Well, you don't want to steal.
I feel, yeah, I feel like we should do, those should be two different things.
I put my corporate leader hat on for that one. Sorry. It's usually how they do it.
I don't know. It could just be a, a multifaceted, a lot of changes.
I haven't written one in a while, but I have, like, the busiest week and a half of the whole year in the next week and a half.
I could write a January one. I can't take one this week. I gotta be really honest. What else could we talk about? I'd be happy to write a January one and have it be a little history of what's been accomplished. Let's see what else. Well, I mean, in Jan-, in December, we usually have highlighted Grand Friends Day, I think. Um.
But the food collection.
We could do the food collection.
Would you like us to write something up?
That would be.
And with their, um, if, also have we, where are we in the, um, the first round of the extracurriculars? Like Take Apart and Jump Rope and things like that. If there's updates on those, how those are going or.
Sure. Yeah, we just finished the.
Cross-country season.
Yep.
Has wrapped up and, um.
We'll put something together and send it to you.
That'd be awesome.
All right, thanks.
Are you gonna write your own ecomium as well when it comes time for that?
Yeah, but he has it written. Are you just gonna share the one that you've been practicing? Yeah.
We should put, um, some of these, uh, does everybody ha- this shared drive, like the, the newsletter schedule, you should make sure this, these types of things are not all just under my name.
Where is that shared?
It's in the shared drive on the, on the, um, like, on the Swayze. I'll, I'll figure. It's in a Google Drive. It's in a shared drive.
And that's how I've been accessing it in the past.
Yeah.
But I don't know where it lives. I don't know. I'm honestly pretty terrible with using Google Drives.
We don't have any, we don't have any topics listed under December, so.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we solved the immediate concern and then, um, then January can write about all the wonderful things Principal Q has accomplished in his time here. And remind people about coming up to the district meeting.
Yeah.
I did, I did appreciate the article that, um, that the SAU partners with a PR firm and they gave me a call. An article was written.
It was a great article.
Seacoast Online, which was.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I'll send it to you all.
Thank you.
I saw the cover picture.
From preschool.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to write the article about people needing to vote.
Well, I think also that February issue of the Town Newsletter will also, I mean, it's almost like a separate, uh, agenda item. Like the.
Right.
Here's the board articles for the school district meeting. Here's what the school district meeting is. Here's a statement from the school board about it.
Right. Usually there's two newsletters, though, I think, right? Letty, right, there's two newsletters, I think.
There's like a.
There's a regular one and then there's an election. Yes, so we, yes.
Well, we can send the message in both.
Yeah, yeah.
Both places.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that, I don't know if this is the time to have that conversation or maybe we have it in January because I, but I do think that, uh, you know, there needs to be a concerted effort to make sure that people come out to vote.
I also wonder, like, and I don't know if this is appropriate or something, they would be, but like if the teachers would write something, like, if it's not coming from us, but it's coming from.
It is your budget, though. It is your budget. It's not the teacher's budget. It is.
But it's a teacher's contract.
It, the teachers will work, yes. But it's also your contract that you negotiated in good faith. And if we decide after our non-public meeting to support it, it's also something you guys, um, should promote. The teachers will do their own qualitative.
Yeah, it's not just, I mean, I, I think we said this a couple meetings ago, but like, I mean, last year, like, thirty second-grade parents came and had their kids sing. And then they got up and left before the vote.
Right.
And so it's like, it, I mean, I, I'm all for us promoting it. I just think that it's like.
Who are people gonna listen to?
We had the most negative vote last year that we've had in my nine years here. And we don't want that trend to continue. Um, you know, I mean, it still was overwhelming, but still, we don't wanna, we don't wanna head down that path, so.
What if we, uh, coordinated like a similar event to kick off the town meeting that involved the students and there was representation like across grade levels? And it was something that, like, the school.
I think we try to do that every year, have, have kids sing, try to bring the Cub Scouts in to do the Pledge of Allegiance. All these things that, you know, you're, you're there for this, so stick around.
Yeah.
To vote. Um, I think those are things we're gonna be doing as a matter of course.
I mean, years ago, we used to do babysitting.
Yeah, we had some childcare put together. I don't know if that's something that we can organize for that night. Because that's the thing, parents come with their second graders, but then their second graders, they don't want them to stick around for the.
Yeah.
For the show.
Do you guys remember, like, I mean, the BTA, I think, used to do the babysitting.
The babysitting.
Yeah.
In a contract year, that would definitely probably be something, but I don't want to speak for the full BTA.
Yeah.
That is what we have done in the past.
Okay. I mean, I think anything that we can do to.
We also send postcards.
To the whole community to vote.
There should be parents.
Well, I appreciate that. That's great. Do we need to talk about the district meeting further?
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's good. I think, you know, the more we can prepare for this, the better. All right. Uh, so the last item on report from the chair is Policy Committee. So, uh, we did meet earlier this month on Molly's birthday and Molly was there for it. The most interesting thing was that the Policy, Policy Committee brought forth basically our public input policy to ask, uh, other districts in the SAU to, to consider adopting it. And so it's listed on the Policy Revision Brief, the EDA to Public Input. We don't need to make a change to ours, um, because basically everyone, um, basically the, what came with the meeting is everyone else put in that, that line that we have about this is for residents and faculty and caretakers or parents of Swayze students. So I don't know where other boards are gonna vote on that policy, but, um, generally, the Policy Committee was well exposed towards what we're doing. So kudos to us for being trendsetters. The rest of these are reviews and minor revisions, um, for updates to law. The crowdfunding is listed as a new policy, but it actually, I think it's a revision because we did a crowdfunding policy last year. There are no significant changes to the policies we're reviewing. There is a bit about, um, career expectation, which believe it or not, does flow down into the elementary schools. We discussed whether or not on this policy IKFG, whether that really would affect the elementary schools. The state rule does require this to, to flow down into elementary schools and I think there are subtle ways that elementary schools can do that. And I think just books available in the library or things like that, or how different things like the STEM program can lead to.
Yep.
The jobs and things like that. And I think that's being done. And then there were a lot of discussions at the Policy Committee meeting about high school-specific policies due to new graduation requirements that came into effect or will come into effect for freshmen starting next year, uh, about, um, which we won't review here, but basically things about personal finance and civics requirements. So basically adding another year of social studies requirements, which will not have an impact on staffing at the high school. They have the staff to, to teach those subjects. Then it would raise the graduation credit requirement from eighty to eighty-four, but most high school students take ninety-four credits anyway. So.
Would it impact being able to do like SST? Because doesn't that high, the social studies requirement gives up space?
There's potential for that, but I think you'd, with Velax, there are probably ways to work around it, depending on if you do Velax for gym or health, which is what my son does. SST is a challenge to, to fit into your school day as it is.
Mm-hmm.
But anyway, so any questions about the policies, if you wanna, we can talk about that in this co-op meeting. But any questions, concerns about the policies presented today in the summary prepared by Dr. Bryant?
Does the career exploration, I actually think we do a ton of that.
We do.
But does that require, like, a document that states, like, a plan? Or does it just say, it just says you have to do it? It doesn't say you need to, like, we don't need to generate anything.
It's the policy, actually, I think, is what is gonna show that we have, you know, we're taking this into account and we're doing this. So this, this policy will be that document. Am I wrong?
Yeah, and we also have, um, our competies, competencies under school counseling. Their start at, when you leave high school with career exploration ready, and it trinkles all the way down. So we haven't finalized our, our, our competencies this year, but included in that, if we had to submit, we'd say this is in grade one, two, and three, how kiddos are exposed to various careers and thought. So there's two ways with the policy. And we will have those competencies that we could show to as a plan. What I would say from the Brentwood Teachers Association is the, they, their only feedback on policies was the crowdsourcing policy and they just wanted to make sure any, um, changes to the policy would not be reinforced retroactively. Because there might be some teachers doing something right now that doesn't match with the policy. And so I just reassured them that, like, we can't reinforce a policy that wasn't in existence. So it would be from the date that the board adopted the policy moving forward. Other than that was the only feedback I received from the Teachers Association.
And the, and the crowdfunding is really just the logo.
Right. It's, it's, right. It, yeah. I don't think anyone's in violation of it, but I just clarified that.
Say we're raising money for sweet, like, they, they, part of their fundraising.
Right.
Which I appreciate, because you know, people could do, whatever, like, they could say whatever they want and it doesn't represent the school.
So is there a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept.
The policies presented for review and revision?
Right.
I'll second. All in favor? All right. All right. And there are two policies for withdrawal, but those are both high school only. You don't have to worry about those. That's it for Policy Committee. That brings us to old business. We have, um, Report Card Committee. That's gonna start.
This Friday.
This Friday, yeah.
Very exciting.
Solar panel update.
The solar panel update, I've spent, I spent some quality time in the SAU office. Power bills, which turns out are very difficult to read, like, more difficult than your home power bills because there's just a lot of information on them. And so, um, Dr. Bennett has gathered the ones. So we had a series. She's gathered the ones that are missing, so, because they weren't all there. And there has, it, it seems like there is some confusion about how, what is going on with our, um, the credits we're getting back from the solar. We did get a check randomly cut to us, but it's, but there's really unclear where that money comes from, where, what they're basing it on. So I'm, um, working with Jack, who works from Barrington Power, to try and really, um, like, whittle that down and say, where, what, where are they getting these numbers? Like, are they accurate? Are we getting the money back that we're supposed to be getting back from the power? So that all being said, I don't have much of an update, other than we're kinda, I'm kind of in this, this digging process to figure out what's going on and why. And I think part of it is that we have, um, we, we weren't getting our power directly through EverSource. We were getting it through a third party. So there was kind of this, like, extra step in, um, the billing process and so, um, so we're working on that. As far as how much power we produced, I went to print it today and their, their, um, platform is down right now, so I can't tell you for today what it is, but, um, so, not a lot to just say, other than I'm working, I'm working on it.
Do other elementary schools have solar yet?
No.
I mean, this is a lot of work. Not to add to your work, but like, perhaps like, once you're all said and done, like, just as collaborative partners, like, things that other schools, should they do this, should think about? Like, in the upfront process to ensure that when we get, when we get the product in place, that like, we actually can show that it's doing what they said it would do.
Yeah, so what, we're, we're, it's a little unclear. So there, so there's something called a net meter, which is, which, um, is supposed to measure the power, whether the power's going in or out. If you don't have a net meter, then it only measures going in and so it measures zero. So at first we were concerned that. So at first we were concerned that, and Eversource, that's their job to put in the net meter, and they have to put in the net meter as their final like approval to say your system can go. So at first we were like, is there not a net meter? Because we, all we were, we were getting no bills, but no credits and late fees. Which was, we were, like, we literally were paying late fees every month for no bill. I, I still have not figured that out. It was only like a fifty-dollar late fee, but I'm not sure why we're paying late fee on a no bill. So um the, so I'm still trying to figure that out, and, and there's, it appears like there's two meters. One of them is a net meter, which is going out, but one's a meter coming in, and that doesn't seem to make sense to Jack from Barrington Power. So I, I um, I said to him, I'm, I can't really figure out these bills, like I don't know what is happening on them. And he said, that's on purpose from the power company, like they make it really intentionally obscure. So um I am hoping, now that we've got all the bills together, and it was like, this happened right before Thanksgiving, and so I've just sent the stuff over to Jack, so he's gonna take a look at it. I'm hoping to sit down with him um and say, okay, let's, I've, I've created a spreadsheet of like the, here's our, here's the power, here's how much we paid and how much energy we used each month of the year last year to, to then compare it to what, because we know how much power we've produced. We don't know how much power we generated, and so Jack's explanation is, well, you just see uh, I mean, how much we, we know how much we produce, we don't know how much we've used. And what, the way you figure out how much you used is you just say, how much went back? And then we know you, let's say you produced a hundred, and you only sent eighty back, that means that you used twenty. But somehow it's, and that, so that's how he said we would calculate it, but somehow we, we are, it's not working out so evenly. He probably, I think, has worked with these electric companies, not that he'll be able to suss it out with time, but he's asked for a bunch of documents, so we're getting him those documents. So I'm gonna sit down and say, okay, here's my spreadsheet, here's what we produced last year, or excuse me, here's what we used last year or in the year before we put in solar, here's what these bills say now, and, and like, you know.
Do you look at this for your house, too?
My power bill?
No, but you have solar, don't you?
No.
Oh, you don't?
No.
I mean, gosh, it's so complicated.
Beyond complicated.
And I'm curious about, does Eversource need to add an additional net meter?
That's the question, because it seems like we have two meters and they should both be net meters.
And to get Eversource on the phone to discuss this is a two-hour wait.
You can have them call back, and they always call back in the most inconvenient time. Like when they're in the middle of a meeting or something, they'll call back.
What about, like, when we were first looking at this, there was a community member who was very helpful in sussing all this out, like, I wonder if just, so that you don't have to become a solar expert?
Yes.
Like, is there somebody that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, he would be helpful to talk to. I'm hoping that Jack can help, help too.
I will also rope in the CFO where I work, because we have Barrington Power, solar panels on the roof of my office building.
Okay.
And so I will talk to her and see if she's been able to figure it out.
That'd be great.
I mean, I'm just like, I wonder if, like, how many people just put them on and just like walk away, right? And like, don't really ever pay any attention.
Yeah, and we do, I mean, in the budget, you'll see there's a decrease, and you have four electrical, um, electricity accounts. And you have a decrease by thirty thousand in it, because we are your main power source, you're definitely reaping the benefits of. It's just the question of, we just got that, we said we weren't gonna, they had no energy credits to pay us for. And after Brian had called, Brian Sands, our Director of Facility, had called a couple times, two weeks later, a check showed up at our door with no explanation.
And no, yeah, zero, it was just like a check.
It was literally just a check and an envelope with no letter, no coverhead, no nothing, and I was like, Brian, what is this? And he was like, this is really interesting. I've been bugging them to get this. So it's, 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 you're saving money. You're, you're, you're saving about thirty thousand a year, estimated. But the rest of it, in terms of what revenue you're bringing in, is, is really what, going down those rabbit holes to try to figure out. And no one wants to be super helpful or forthcoming.
That question I have, and this is like, maybe doesn't work out. If this is, we know by the school district meeting, and we can kind of simplify, like, could we, do we have kids that could present about the solar project? It would take a while, but like have like, I don't know, fifth graders like, oh, we have solar at our school, thank you. Town people, and kind of give like a basics.
That'd be really cool.
Wouldn't that be cute?
That would be. If my kid wasn't a complete introvert, who would know?
No, he's, it's my comment to him. Just give him, that's, it was not you, Megan, he was yelling at me about something else.
Megan's got great ideas.
Megan has great ideas.
Have a lot of ideas.
That's fine.
Yeah, good ideas.
Yeah, like, not that one.
Have him sing a song about.
You have a fifth grader, right?
Yeah, he wouldn't do this, though.
I still say it, put him in charge.
Alright, let's keep.
Um, well, anyway, so I guess we'll have to find out in January, what you hear from Jack about
Yeah.
whether we can start getting like a uh identifiable, know what we produce, know how that matches up to what we use. And whether we're getting appropriate credits back, if we're using, producing more than we're using, or not paying too much for using more than we're producing.
We did find that, sorry to, yes.
Okay.
We should do that. He was also like, you should stop using that carrier right away. They're charging you one cent more per kilowatt than Eversource would just charge you if you just went straight through them. So cancel that contract right now. I don't think anything is that easy, but for one cent.
Well, perfect.
One cent per kilowatt hour, we use a lot of kilowatt.
Um, just what, and you and I can talk about my question about the
Yes.
Report Card Committee, but the one thing that I have every time I've asked anybody about it, they're like, why is it called a Report Card Committee? And I was like, well, it's really about assessments, just feedback.
Okay, and we'll talk.
They're like, is it just about a report card? I'm like, no, it's, I don't think so.
Ooh, the list is getting longer.
It's sorry.
Principals are adding names for you, yeah. And I, I can mention that at the committee on Friday. We talked about all of it.
So more to come on solar?
Oh, yeah.
Anything more on report card? Wait until.
No, I was just, I had, I'm that parent right now that asks about all of the grades that I don't understand, and so I've just was curious as to who was on that committee, because anybody I've asked hasn't had known anything about it, so I just asked.
Is there any other old business that people want to discuss? Any new business that we have not discussed that people want to discuss?
I'd like to make a motion to move into non-public.
Okay, so um, well, we're going to move into non-public. We will come back into public simply to close the meeting, so that concludes the public portion of our meeting.
We have to do a roll call vote to go.
Yeah.
So there's a motion.
Uh, there's a second to enter non-public under.
RSA.
Subsection E.
Yeah.
Second, second, so we have to roll call.
Aye.
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 Alright, motion passes. Now we're going non-public. Have a good evening. Thank you for coming. Alright, we're back in public, and we'd look, I'll be looking for a motion to accept the recommendation of the negotiating committee, or?
Make a motion to accept the recommendations of the negotiation committee.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, motion passes unanimously. Alright, motion to adjourn.
I get that one.
Alright, second, all in favor? Alright, passed unanimously. Thank you.